Welcome to our regular school committee meeting of Thursday, October 11th, 2018. We may not be live right now. You may be hearing us on recording because we're having some technical problems. They're going to see if they can get it started in a little bit, or it'll just be broadcast later. I'm going to start by talking about our art, which is new. This is on Board A, which is over in that corner. We have digital photography.
Excuse me, you might want to get the light off so if it does come on.
We can't, we can't, we can't.
All right.
Students are very excited to work in the new AHS digital photography studio. The course gives students an opportunity to learn a versatile medium that's seen in all aspects of their lives. They learn about this powerful and pervasive tool experienced so often through the Internet, movies, television, and print media, and they find out that it can also be used for personal expression and social commentary. Course projects include photojournalism, film noir, portraiture, corporate branding, and personal reflections. Students learn the history of photography and have opportunities to work in the style of chosen artists. Yeah, so that's Board A. Board B is next to it. This is called the Collaborative Wings Project. Ms. Rabola, Ms. McCullough, and Ms. Archambault are happy to announce that there is a new large-scale collaborative art piece installed in the Teachers Cafe for the Arlington High School community to enjoy. Over 300 AHS art students participated in this year's Wings Project. Each student designed and created a feather that represents what motivates, inspires, or encourages them. These individual feathers come together to make up one large set of wings that celebrate diversity within our community and contribute to an inclusive and welcoming learning environment. We invite you to take a few moments to view and participate in this installation. On Board C, which I'm guessing is there, there are stick drawings. Students learn that drawing can be about letting go of preconceived ideas and cliche habits. They rediscover drawing through pure mark-making with conventional and unconventional drawing materials. This process also emphasizes the ways to take advantage of unexpected happy accidents. Both the mind and body are activated in new gestural wings to create engaging interpretations of observed art, or observed nature. Students draw with long sticks and tree branches dipped in black ink to capture the essence of the observed object. Moving to Board D, students began this project painting unit by creating a series of small abstract works exploring surface tools and application of paint to a surface. They then look closely at a number of artists from the abstract expressionism. They then practice movement and gestural mark-making to create large-scale works on paper that recorded movement, mood, and expression through layers of colors. They learned that moving their whole body with their brush, not just their hand, is essential to effective action painting. Students carefully built up layers of depth and created evocative works that explored the properties of paint. And on Board E, in the back of the studio, or in the back of the room, we're excited to revive the ceramics pottery and sculpture program at Arlington High School this year. So far, the studio has been bustling with students learning hand-building and wheel-working techniques to create artwork from clay, a medium that has been used throughout history and around the world. These photos show student progress and student projects in process. Artists working on the pottery wheels and our new high-quality kiln. We hope that these students and many more will enjoy getting their hands dirty with working with clay. So, that's our art. It's all from the high school, and it's all really cool. I invite everyone to come up here and take a better look at it. Moving on, first, I want to welcome our AEA rep, who's Joanna Keys. And, welcome, thank you, and our student rep who's joining us again from last week. Thank you, from last meeting. And, now, I believe Dr. McNeil had an announcement before we continue?
Yes. I just wanted to alert the community about the official, although Gibbs School is open and students are attending and everything is going well, we do have the official ribbon-cutting ceremony, which takes place on October 21st at 2:00. It will take place in the gym, and then there will be an open house from the time that the official formal ceremony ends around 2:30-ish to about 5:00 PM. So, come on out if you are curious about our new exciting sixth-grade school, Gibbs. And it's quite a sight to see, so I encourage all community members to come out and view it in person.
Okay.
Good luck on October 21st.
On October 21st, yep.
So, at this point, we would have public participation, but I think there is no public participation, so we will move on to the Arlington Community Ed... Oh, and first, I forgot to mention, Dr. Bodie is not here because she is on vacation. And Mr. Spiegel is not here because he is at a conference, I believe. And Mr. Thielman will be joining us later because of work commitment. And now, we go on to the Arlington Community Educational Annual Update with Ms. Rothenberg and Ms. Loeb.
Oh, no. Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us back. We love to come and talk about ourselves. We love what we do. My name is Jen Rothenberg. I'm the Director of Arlington Community Education, and I do the adult programming. And this is Andrea Loeb, who does all of our youth and teen programming. She does K through 12. So, I think most of you know at this point what our program is, but for those who may not, we, the Arlington Community Education, is a completely self-sustaining program of the Arlington Public Schools. We receive no funding from the schools or from the town. So, all of our salaries and expenses are all paid by the tuitions that students pay for our programs. We have four terms a year. I forgot we have a PowerPoint presentation. Hold on. Hello? Can you move the mic a little bit closer, towards us? Nope. Is it turned on on the side? Green?
Yep.
There we go. There we go. So, that's just a little bit about who we are, and as I said, we offer four terms a year. We have a fall term, which we are in now, winter, spring, and we do a summer fund program, which is all youth programming. We serve kindergarten through seniors, and three nights a week, sorry about the parking. We have hundreds of students that come through our doors and take our classes on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday nights. And we sort of think of ourselves as bringing the public into the public schools. This is our staff. We, Andrea and I, are the only full-time employees of the program. We have six part-time employees in our main office, and we're typically here from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM most days of the week, 12 months a year. And we are a well-oiled machine, but I have to say that in order for our programs to run smoothly, we have to hire staff all around town to help us. And so, for Andrea's programming, she has a coordinator at every elementary school to help with the after-school programs. We have, we hire currently for this term, we have seven high school students that we have hired who work with us in the evenings in the culinary program, and they work at the front desk with us. These are some of our, Kevin Toro, who's a high school teacher who is doing a program this fall on race. And in addition, we have a brand-new summer fund program for our teens for, as counselors, a teen training program. And we now have a new high school intern, which we're very excited about. So, our programming, our adult programming, has been growing over the years. I think we're mostly just limited by building usage. And so, right now, we've expanded. We have approximately 25 classes a night that we offer, plus we offer classes during the day in churches and in other locations around town in the senior center. We have programs from chair caning to financial aid, knitting, lots of lectures, lots of cooking, daytime weekend classes. I think everybody has one of our catalogs, so you can thumb through that. We also put, we inserted a copy of our table of contents of just the summer program. We ran out of catalogs, but we thought we'd put the table of contents in so you could just get an idea of some of the offerings. But we have, just for our fall term, we have combined over 300 classes that we offer in just our fall term. And so, I will pass it over to Andrea.
Thank you. Well, like the adult programs, the youth programs are growing. We have, we serve all grade levels, kindergarten through high school. We are in all schools, and we serve them year-round because we have this giant summer program. We've also started doing some programming here at the high school in the evenings for families, which has become popular. So, we have adult-child cooking, adult-child glass art, things like that. Children usually seven and up with a parent, so it's a nice expansion. The high school, let's see. Those are our high school through family night series. Here at the high school, we have a big driver's ed program. We've expanded to nine sessions this year. We'll do three summer programs, up from two. We do a lot of SAT, ACT prep, boot camp-type courses. And then, of course, we hire a lot of high school students. I'll get into that in the summer fund slide. But we do have a lot of high school students coming into our office regularly to help us. We have a new intern, as Jen said. We hire them at night and in the summer. It's nice to be with them. Kid Zone and Teen Zone are the after-school enrichment programs at the all-seven elementary schools. The Odyssean, and now, we've just started some programming at Gibbs. We have about four classes that have started up there. We have, enrollments are going up as the school enrollments go up. We have full classes. We have waitlists. We're turning kids away. We're really just limited by our space like everybody else. I could probably double some of these programs after school, but, you know, it's tricky navigating, so we're just trying to find that sweet spot. But the demand is there. We do try to hire Arlington Public Schools staff as much as possible, so a lot of teachers will teach the classes. And we do offer tuition assistance for a lot of kids. Some of our popular classes, you may know about Fit Girls, which is our large spring running program. We serve about 350 girls in grades four to five around town. And families have asked that we do the same for boys, so now we're running a Boys in Motion program. We're happy to say we have it at every elementary school. Most are coached by Arlington Public School teachers. Those are non-competitive programs, and they end in a fun 5K race that they run together as a team. Then we do the usual, pretty much everything that appeals to all kinds of kids. We do have a, that started last night, an eighth and ninth grade sexuality education class that is 14 weeks long. Let's see. Vacation Fund, we started this in 2016. It's getting bigger slowly. We are getting traction. And so, we will continue to do both February and April vacation programs here at the high school. Summer Fund is certainly our largest youth program. Jen and I always like to describe it as a pop-up elementary school that we put up at Odyssean. It's over 400 kids a day come through those doors, 25-plus teachers a day. We have two directors that serve as sort of our principals, and we have 271 classes. It's five weeks long. We, as much as the kids love it, I think the staff love it too. It's a nice summer job for a lot of our public school teachers, and they get to do something outside of their normal academic areas. We have social studies teachers doing sports. We have math teachers doing art, and everybody seems to enjoy it. We, we've always had teen counselors who used to be unpaid. Last year, we expanded this program. We made it more formal. We have rising ninth graders who are counselors in training, and then we have counselors and senior counselors, and they are getting paid at varying levels. And we're adding more training, and they get more feedback from the teachers, and we get more feedback from them. So, we're happy with that program. I think it will become competitive. Do you want to talk about enrollments?
Sure. So, as we said, enrollments for, for all of our programs are going up. Our adult classes in particular, they're starting to fill faster. We have waitlists. We're up about 27% this year at the same time over last year. We, so with our increased enrollments, our revenue has also increased at about 14%. So, we're doing well, and people keep coming back and are taking multiple classes, which is really great. You can see, again, this is just sort of a breakdown of the number of classes that we offer each term. And then, I really just had to have an excuse to put this picture up because that's the actor Bradley Whitford, who we were very excited to have. He came last spring and spoke. His brother is a resident in town, and he works with us and does evening programs, evening speaker series. So, we were very excited to have him join us last spring. And we, at the suggestion of Dr. Bodie, we worked with the principal at the Gibbs, and we used this event as an opportunity to raise money for the library. And so, we actually wound up donating all of our time and hours, as well as all the ticket sales. And we did a raffle that night, and we raised $9,000, and that went right to the library. And so, we were, we were very proud of that event, and we're always looking for ways to give back to the community, and that was one way. Another way is that we, this year, gave out more scholarships to seniors and to free and reduced lunch students than we have in the past. It's over $10,000 that we were able to give back in that way. And I think that's just how we can help support the community that has supported us over the years. And I think just for our goals moving forward, we hire, we do hire a lot of Arlington Public Schools staff, and we hope to increase those numbers over the years. We work hard to stay involved with the teachers and their programming, and we are always open to partnering on events with them, whether it's an author or some other lecture series. We know, in addition, that there is a lot of discussion about the costs and administration for the rebuild, and we are really pleased to be so involved in the process, and we have spoken with the architects multiple times. We really hope that our program can remain front and center in some way in the new school. We feel that we have formed so many relationships over the years in this building with the administration and with all of the teachers. We use their spaces all the time, and we collaborate with the teachers all the time. I'm currently working with the Art Department to bring back a jewelry-making program, which is going to require purchasing equipment, getting special permitting. But that's the kind of give-back that we can provide so that we can run jewelry classes, but then the Art Department can now offer that as a program during the day to the high school students. And so, we know that the community, there are going to be a lot of folks in town who are being asked to fund this rebuild, and we have heard, well, the question is, how is that going to benefit us? And we feel that our program is sort of the connection between the community and bringing those people back into the building. We offer an opportunity for them to benefit from the rebuild. So, I think there's a lot of ways that we can help just bring the community in, and we hope that that will continue. We do work a lot with the students in the high school. We hire students, as we've mentioned, and they're always in our office asking about SAT and driver's ed, so you know that. So, anyway, we're just, we're excited to be part of that conversation and hope to have a real presence in the new high school building. So, thank you, and we're open to any questions or comments.
Does anyone have a question?
Just to point out, one of the cute kids was Mr. Carden's daughter.
Oh, yeah. That's the pottery bill.
So, so, one of the things I say to people when we talk about the new high school is when the, that obviously, this is an educational facility, and educational needs come first and foremost. But it's also going to be very much, and is very much, a community resource. And certainly, the Arlington Community Ed, it plays a very strong part in making that a community resource. And so, I thank you for that, and I do think that the town feels some ownership over this building, and which raises lots of passion, which is all very, very good and important because it's a really, it's the heart of Arlington, really. I mean, we, this location is the heart of Arlington. And your programs definitely play a role in that. I was going to ask you about your challenges. I assume that space and the rebuild is potentially a challenge, but just want to hear if there's any other ones. And then, the third, or the other question I'd like to ask is, if somebody has sort of an idea for a class or feedback, how would they get that to you?
Starting from the last question for feedback, we often get, we send out evaluations for every class we do. We also solicit ideas for classes and also for people who want to teach a class. So, anybody in the public can write in and suggest a class they'd like to teach or would like us to offer. So, we keep a close eye on that, and we find some great teachers that way.
You took the easy question.
So, challenges.
Well, space.
In terms, I think that our biggest challenge is really just space. I think we could program this building if we could get the students to the classrooms and out safely. But honestly, we have to keep our classrooms to a certain footprint each night because there's only so deep into the building we want the students to go because it's nighttime, and they, you know, there's a lot of anxiety for adults who come into a building they've never been into before. So, I think with, you know, obviously, a new facility with better floor plan, we have, you know, we could really do much more programming. And I would say the same would be true in the elementary schools. In the middle schools, there's just not enough space after school for Andrea to program. There just, there just aren't rooms. But the demand is there, and people are asking us for it all the time. So, I think that's the biggest challenge. Was there a third part to your question?
No, that was it. I misspoke.
Anyone else have a, okay, Ms. Morgan?
I just wanted to say, our family takes a lot of advantage of community ed. From my daughter has been a fit girl. She's doing parkour. I don't know what that is, but she says it's great. We've done some of the summer fund. She did the Gibbs class. And my senior father is taking a French class, who, and he says, "It's great," which is high praise coming from him. So, it must be really good because he's signed up again. The one thing that I was really excited to see was how much scholarship money you guys are giving out, and I think that's marvelous. And I just want to encourage you to keep reaching out, and I'm sure that you are, around students who receive free lunch. It's a really tricky thing because there are a lot of issues with privacy. But, you know, it's the kind of thing that social workers and, you know, people have a sense of that, I think, in our schools, and being able to reach out to those students and families who qualify for free lunch, who might not, you know, the prices are very, very reasonable, but, you know, if, looking at the metrics for free and reduced lunch, these prices are prohibitive for those families, obviously. So, as much as we can continue to seek out those students and, you know, interfacing with Denise here, who does, you know, because what would be great is as she, you know, as she does the applications, if she can, you know, she gets somebody on the phone, and if you're in her ear, and she could be like, "Hey, by the way, did you know?" Just because then, you're going to, you know, it's going to be collecting those kids. That's the hardest, right? But I just, I want to encourage you to keep, keep, obviously, you're doing it already, but as much as we can get those guys, it would be fantastic.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Mr. Carden?
Hi, thank you. So, yes, I want to echo everybody's congratulations on how well you're doing and serving the needs of the community. So, just two points. One is that we heard a lot during the year, last year, from elementary school parents about the after-school programs, who do not have enough space in almost all of the elementary schools. And they do unfortunately point to the community ed using up space as, well, if community ed can get those classrooms, why can't after-school get them? So, there's definitely this tension there with these space needs. Traditionally, the after-school programs have not used teachers' classrooms because they need to get in there right away, and you guys have like a more, like a 20-minute leeway or something or other. And your use is less intensive. You use it for a few weeks, and then it's over, or just one day a week or whatever. But there's definitely that tension there that we want you to be aware of. And in talking with the building principals and coming up with creative ideas to get both of you more space, and working with the teachers in particular because they're the ones that are impacted by that. So, going forward, I mean, everybody's facing that challenge. We aren't going to be able to build any more classrooms. So, if we can sort of work on that, that would be great. The other thing is, you're doing really well financially as well, and so, both on the scholarships. And I appreciate that you're now going to pay a building rental fee. That's great. And going forward, build that into your budget. That'd be terrific. But also, if you can offer more scholarships or, you know, promote, use some money to promote them, that might be another way because you are, we don't want to see your balance growing, basically.
Right. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? I just want to echo what people were saying. Thank you especially for the work that you did towards the Gibbs Library. That was really, it was an amazing event, and it was a wonderful way of using the funds. And, okay, I had a question. Oh, I was wondering, I was intrigued by your increasing enrollment for your adult classes. And I'm wondering what you see, where is that coming from? Are you just getting better at figuring out classes, or is everyone realizing that you're there? Or is it everyone suddenly decided that they're bored at home and they need to get out into the high school?
That's a good question. We tend to see trends. September is, the fall is usually our busiest time of year. There's some back-to-school mentality, I think, for everybody, no matter how old you are. I think we're getting better at what we do. I think we're hiring staff who are keeping people coming back. So, if some, you know, and adults are usually pretty particular about who their teachers are, and so, if it's not worth it to them, they're just not going to show up. And so, I think that's just a good indicator for us that the quality of our teaching has gone up. I think we are following more trends. So, we have things like forest bathing and other programs that are kind of trendy right now. And I think word of mouth. I think people have really recognized that the program has changed over the past few years, and I think it's more reliable. I think it's, so it's a little bit of everything.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much. Do you want to add? No?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, moving on, we have the State Accountability Report and Analysis by Dr. McNeil and Ms. O'Sullivan.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Paulo O'Sullivan, who works as our District Data Manager. And she also serves as a math coach. So, I'll be joining her at the table, and we'll be going, we'll share a PowerPoint slideshow about the new indicators and how our accountability, the formula for our accountability, and how that results in the accountability ratings that our schools have received this year.
As long as it works. So, you're going to click. Okay. Hi, good evening. So, if you go to the next one. What we're going to talk about tonight is just sort of a brief overview of the system and the results for Arlington. In this slide presentation, we do use a lot of slides that have been excerpted from Desi's slideshow. And we have a link there where there is more detail on Desi's site. I do want to point out that this is based on what's called MCAS 2.0. So, just as a brief history, there was the old MCAS that existed for many So, just as a brief history, there was the old MCAS that existed for many years up until 2015. And then in 2016, districts had a choice whether to administer the old MCAS or to try out the PARC assessment, if you remember that. And in Arlington, we did PARC, and that was kind of a hiatus from accountability for a year. And then in 2017, the state launched MCAS 2.0, which is a new version of MCAS. Has, some of the grades are tested online, and the types of questions are different. And in that year, they also were on a hiatus for accountability. So, now, in this year, 2018, there's a new accountability system that the state has developed over the past year, and it was approved by the Board of Education in June. So, this is the first time that we're seeing our results in this new system. So, I'll start here, which is kind of where we end up. Schools, rather than being placed in numerical levels, if you remember from the old system, there was level one, level two, level three, and so on, they now have categorizations that are not numbered in any way. So, on the right side, I don't know if you click, do you get to the next slide, or do you get, okay, there we go. So, on the right side is the normative part of the system, which means that this is where the state is, for the most part, comparing schools to other schools that serve similar grade bands and seeing how that school falls compared to the other schools. And by doing this, they identify about 15% of the schools across the state that are categorized as requiring assistance or intervention. So, we don't have any schools in Arlington in there, but I just wanted to say that's one part of the system. Schools that don't fall into that, we then shift over toward the middle of this diagram, and that's what they call the criterion-referenced component, where a school is compared to targets that have been set for that school, and a determination is made after looking at all the indicators in a couple different ways, whether or not that school is meeting targets, or are they partially meeting targets. So, that's what happens to all the other schools that don't fit into that right side of the box. And next year, there'll actually be a third category called not meeting targets. So, for this year, Desi is saying school is either meeting targets or partially meeting targets. And if they're in either of those, then they are a school without required assistance or intervention. And then over on the far left, we have the schools of recognition, where some schools are identified based on high achievement, high growth, or significant improvement. So, that part of the system has stayed. We're going to talk about what data is used to figure this out, the indicators, and for whom, which students are we, does Desi consider when they do these calculations? So, before we get there, you can go to the next, sorry, probably had a lot of extra things. Okay, so before we get there, let's just talk briefly about the results in Arlington. So, all of the Arlington schools, with the exception of Mononoby Preschool, as it doesn't have data, this type of data, the district rece, and the district received the overall classification of not requiring assistance or intervention. So, if you remember, that was sort of the middle of the diagram, and some schools fell into partially meeting targets, and a couple of schools fell into meeting targets. And it's really based on this complicated formula, looking at the indicators compared to targets that Desi set for us for, for 2018. So, the indicators for elementary schools and middle schools include achievement data, so that's the MCAS 2.0, looking at the English Language Arts Scaled Score, the Mathematics Scaled Score, and then the Science, because it's still the old MCAS, they can't use that Scaled Score for technical reasons, so they're looking at what they call the Composite Performance Index, and that's leftover from the old system. Eventually, that will shift to the Scaled Score. They also consider student growth, using the student growth percentile in both ELA and Math. This is a new indicator this year, that they're looking at English language proficiency, meaning the progress made by students, our English, English language learners, towards attaining English language proficiency. So, the percentage of those students meeting annual targets. So, that's a new indicator in this system. And then another new indicator is the chronic absenteeism, the percentage of students missing 10% or more of their days in membership. That's what they define as chronic, chronically absent. And for high schools, they have all of those indicators plus a couple of other indicators thrown in, which include the, what they're kind of categorizing under high school completion. So, within that bucket, we have the four-year cohort graduation rate, the extended engagement rate, and the annual dropout rate. And then also, under the additional indicators, they include the percentage of 11th and 12th graders completing advanced coursework. And Desi has released a long list of what they consider to be advanced coursework. It's not just AP or IB, but it includes other things as well. So, that's the data that they're looking at. Targets they set for this, for 2018, they gave us, based on 2017, our target for 2018. They didn't go far out into the future like they've done in the past. They will do that at some point, but for now, we just had the targets for 2018, and we received those in the spring while the students were taking the test. The way they set those targets was a statistical method where they were looking at improve, improvement that schools had made in the past, to try to figure out what was reasonable and attainable. There's much more detail on Desi's site about the statistics used in that, but that's sort of the best way that I could summarize that, setting those targets for the indicators. Okay. So, thinking about that and thinking about the data, and we're going to look at an example next that I think will help make this clearer, but for every indicator, and when Desi compared it to its target for each indicator, there were points assigned depending on where they fell. So, if they met the target, they got three points. That was sort of the goal, three points meeting the target. If you exceed the target, you get four points, and then if you didn't meet the target, it gradually goes down to either two, one, or zero points. You can imagine this, these points getting assigned for every indicator, and that three is the goal. In the end, it gets reported as a percentage, so three out of four, so the goal would be 75% for schools. And that's what ultimately determines their reason for classification. So, this is just an example. This is not any of our schools. This is an example of an elementary or a middle school, but you can see all of those indicators that we talked about listed down on the left side in the, in the table. And let's just first talk about those first three columns, which are all students. So, they're, Desi's looking at the data for all students in the school. And for each of those indicators, as I mentioned, compares 2017 to 2018 and assigns the points for that indicator out of the total possible. Those get summed in the gray bars. There's different weightings, achievements given more weighting than growth, those both are given more weighting than the English language proficiency and chronic absenteeism, but at the end of the day, that's all averaged down. So, for all students, this particular school was at 63 and 5/10ths percent. So, that same calculation is then done with what they're calling the lowest performing students. So, every school, they're looking at the bottom quartile of students, and they're looking to see if that group is moving, if that group is making progress over time. So, in the past, it was a lot about demographic subgroups. Now, they're looking at that lowest performing quartile of students. And they're looking at the data just for those kids and seeing whether or not they met their targets. That all boils down to a percentage, and then those two percentages are averaged, and that's where you'll see a school's average. The school was 64%, so they would be partially meeting targets. To be meeting targets, you have to be at 75% or higher. So, the school would be in the partially meeting. So, on the next slide is an example of a high school. It really is all the same, except there's additional indicators in there, as we mentioned, the high school graduation rate, extended engagement rate, so on and so forth. And with adding in those extra indicators, the weightings get a little different, but otherwise, the formula is still the same. So, this is all to that final classification, but also, Desi reports a lot of this data for all the demographic subgroups, and they report percentiles and a lot of other data that is just reported out there. It's not used in the ultimate determination, but that's available on their site. And on the last slide, we have the link just to the profiles and to the resources, and I'll let Dr. McNeil take the next slide.
So, we've began to analyze the data that we have received, and for this year, I've also put together a district data team so that we can begin to have a common way for looking at data across the district. But some of the things that, you know, have been done already is the teacher, the principals have received their lowest performing quartile of students in each one of their buildings. And we began to look at those students to identify who those students are, and so that we can recognize various levels of support that they, they can, we can provide for those students. We've also, so I talked about the launch of a district data team. We've adopted what's called the Data Wise Approach. It is something that's out of Harvard. The, we've, we've purchased a text, and the whole data team is now studying the text, doing a book study throughout the year, and then we're going to talk about how we're going to unveil this process to the rest of the district. And then we've also, you know, in order to address some of the, you know, they have in there like absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, and for some of our students. So, we've also want to focus on social-emotional learning of students as well as cultural proficiency in order to provide an environment where all students feel welcome and safe so that they can achieve at their highest level. So, those are just an overview of some of the things that we're doing right now. I mean, we've also created a district diversity team that's, that's going to begin to meet, and we're going to continue to work with Dr. Carlos Hoyt as a consultant. So, those are some of the things we're trying to do district-wide, to provide a consistent view or perspective to that practice of looking at data and also looking at how we're creating relationships with our students of color and any other student from a different, you know, demographic background. So, all, all demographic backgrounds. So, on the next slide, we also have put up there various email address or web addresses that you can use to access some more information from Desi in order to look at the data. And also, the, just to let the community know that, you know, for a while, the information or the results from the MCAS are embargoed, whereas it's just, uh, school personnel have access to that data, but right now, they're unembargoed, so anybody in the community can go on the Desi website and look up the district or, you know, profiles and look at the data as well. So, they can look at the accountability reports from each one of the schools at their own leisure. So, at this time, that ends our presentation, and we'll take any type of questions.
First, I wanted to say for viewers at home, or millions of viewers joining us now, apparently, we're now live. We were off the air because there were technical problems. I think they're just coming in, in the middle, so you can look at the rest of the show online at the ACMI website. Mr. Carden?
Thank you. So, is the plan for you to take a deep dive into the data and come back to us with how we did, or?
So, yes. So, like I did last year, is I've broken this presentation up into two parts.
Okay.
So, there were some changes to the rating system last year because of the new MCAS 2.0, and so, I gave that presentation. So, I'm going to, I, you know, kind of took that same format and for this year, so this is the first part of the MCAS presentation. So, the next part of it, we'll do a deep dive and look at some of the subgroup data from across the district. So, that will, we'll get into some more of those actual results from the MCAS on the next, in, in two weeks at the next school committee meeting.
In two weeks, okay.
Yes.
And then, just one question, so I'm making sure I understand, understanding this. The high school, for example, it's just there, one second, has a seemingly very low score of 38%, but the percentile says 77%. So, does that mean all high schools are generally low, or what does that, what does that mean?
So, you would have to look at, well, I, I, off the top of my head, I can't, I don't have what those particular indicators are that's causing the high school to score at the 38 percentile, but that, the high school-
Thirty-eight, 38% of meeting, that's the score, the progress towards targets.
Right. So, after they add up the points for, as Paula went through and looked at both sections for all students and looked at those indicators.
Right, right, right.
That's the percentage of points that the high school achieved, and so, that's, that's the end result. So, I would have to go back and look at the specific indicators where the high school, at the points that they receive for each one of those indicators.
I think what Mr. Carden's trying to ask is, so we've got the 38%, which is a progress towards improvement, but then there's the accountability percentile, which is 77%. We don't understand the relationship.
So, well, it's compared to the other high schools, so it's at the 70, 77% of the high schools-
Perform worse.
They, no, not, yes, perform worse than that particular, than our high school. So, we're at the 77th percentile of all high schools in the state.
Okay.
So, that's that accountable, they, when Paula was talking about how they compare the, the various schools in a particular grade band to other schools in the state, we're at the 77th percentile.
Okay. Mr. Schlichtman?
Okay. For clarity purposes, there are two distinct calculations, just like if you were a child taking the MCAS, you have an achievement score and a student growth percentile. The growth percentile, in essence, is this target percentage, how much you had towards the targets. And there, it is somewhat serendipitous, if you had a really great year last year, you just overperformed on your baseline year, it's going to be harder to make your targets. If you did incredibly poorly last year, and you do reasonably well this year, you're going to be storming towards your targets. So, there, as, as they add years to this thing, it's, it's going to accumulate. Now, the thing is, is this thing is divided up in two parts. One is for all students, and then is the lowest performing quartile. And for all students meeting our improvement targets, we did, we were 61% at the high school. And Desi says that anything over 50 means you're improving. The lowest performing students had a 14%, 14% attainment towards targets with a bunch of zeros and ones in, in the list. So, the thing that I'd want to note in two weeks is, what do we make of that and what specifically we're doing over the high school to play on that? For the most part, we only had two schools with percentile score, the target percentage score is below 50. And most of our schools were up and to the right, were generally high achieving and generally improving. But I, I'd really like to get a sense in two weeks of, you know, where the discrepancies are and what might be happening. Is it a quirk of the previous year's baseline? Are we experiencing problems? Is there something that we need to address? Some more targeted analysis based on the fact that you know the district better than I can ever do because you're working in a different space.
Well, thank you for that addition, first of all, but the deeper dive is going to look at subgroup data, and it's also going to do a comparison to how our students did district-wide at each grade level compared to the state. So, you, that'll, you'll be able to get us some types of, some sense of how we did compared to the rest of the students in Massachusetts. So, that will give you a better picture of where we are in our achievement. But we consider this year like a baseline year because this is the first year using this new accountability system. So, I think that we're going to learn a lot from this, and I still think our, our schools are doing relatively well, but we do have some areas of concern. Number one would be the achievement gap as it relates to our students of color, students with disabilities, low economic students, Title I students, and how they're comparing in their achievement. I students, and how they're comparing in their achievement when you compare them to the majority, the rest of the students, our majority white students. So, there are some areas that we would like to address, and we've already started to put those strategies in place, like the date, the district data team, sharing the, you know, lowest 25 percent, lowest performing 25 percent student population with principals, so they can begin to see what some of those areas that need to be addressed. So, we've already started to, we've already, and I've convened a subcommittee of the district data team that consists of the content curriculum leaders, Paula, or Mrs. O'Sullivan, sorry, I want to be formal. We've already started to do some, to, to implement a data protocol in order to look at, make some observations, and then ask some probing questions that we would like to, you know, share with building principals and teachers to, in order to lead us in a certain way of looking at that data, that data in a more in-depth, and give it a more in-depth analysis.
I think we shouldn't go into real in-depth questions about numbers because we haven't seen the numbers yet. But, if you have something that you want to tell Dr. McNeil that we'd like to see coming up, you know, a broad-
Right, that, that's perfect because-
I can do that.
If, if there are, if there are specific pieces of information, I can include that into my presentation in two weeks.
Okay. Mr. Haner?
Two things. On the third slide that you had with those three columns, can you go back to that for one second? Down at the bottom there, it talks about the 2018, 2019. I'm just curious, when they add that third part, not meeting, what's the difference going to be between that and the, the third complete section?
Right, so, um-
I, 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 I'm not expecting any answer. This is DESI. They seem, just as soon as you get a handle on all this stuff, they change the rules, they change the formats and stuff. That's, yeah, I'm not expecting an answer right now. I'm just bringing that up. One thing I would like, if you could, is that we get this information, your presentation, at least a day or so before. I'd-
Oh, absolutely.
Just so we can ask good questions for you that night.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
I just wanted to second what Mr. Schlickman asked about. There, there seem to be, you know, a couple of schools that are, are meeting the targets, and then there seems to be a large group of elementary schools especially that are sort of hovering in the sort of 70 percent meeting targets, and then we have two stratton in the high school that are, are significantly lower than that. And I would like some more specific, I, I don't, I'd like some more specific details about what the plan is for those specific schools when you come back to report again, and, and less sort of, I get kind of caught up in sort of district-wide, which I get that we're looking at that, but it seems to me that in looking at this, if, if it's important enough that it's, you know, on our agenda and we're going to talk about it over several meetings, then there's obviously something to this accountability, accountability criteria. So, I would like to understand why those two schools in particular are, appear to be different than the rest.
Yes, I can provide that information. But, I, I, I just also want to preface that the purpose for the two parts, if we didn't have new accountability measures, then this would not be a two-part presentation. This would be one presentation as we, as we view the MCAS results. The only reason why I broke it up into two parts is because it was so much information, I didn't want to overwhelm everyone with everything at once. So, I wanted to give you some context, so when I do provide the scores, you can utilize the accountability, this information regarding accountability measures that are used to figure out everybody's rating. It will, it will make better sense for you.
Okay. Dr. Seuss?
So, I like, it's very interesting to, that DESI's focusing on this lower performing 25 percent. I think that's an interesting way to look at it. I would love to see a comparison between the groups that we were traditionally tracking to see, you know, which of them fall in that lower 25 percent? Are some doing better than others? You know, where, where should we really focus our resources as a district? What are the challenges, barriers, and so forth? And so, I'd be interested in just seeing analysis of that. I know those are sort of squishy, I mean, they're not, it may be difficult to get, but, but, but obviously, in certain cases, we need to do more. And I also would love to see analysis of where we're doing the right thing. I mean, there's, there's some successes here, so can we point to why we're succeeding in those places?
Right, and I want to, I want to also, what I'll also do is, is I'll put in where we were last year, because I think, as Mr. Schlippman was trying to allude to, as he, as he, looking at the way that they're now using this formula to come up with these ratings, I don't want to give a sense that schools are doing worse because the ratings are coming out with this specific language. And I think that when you see, like, in some of, in many of the areas, we are doing better than we did last year. It's just a way that they're now using these new indicators to, to, you know, report the scores that is impacting us in a way, but it's also leading us to think about these in a different way as well.
I think the goal is to be ever vigilant, to make sure that we're not missing something.
Absolutely. But, I also want to preface, but I won't have all the answers at the next, I, I just want to say this, because this is a, it's going to be a year-long process. There's, there's a lot of individuals that are involved, building principals. So, we're, we have just started to, like, it's the beginning of the year, relatively, at the beginning of the year. We just got the results back, we're digging into them. So, I am not going to have, and I just want to let everyone know, that I'm not going to have an answer to all the questions. Maybe I can come back in the spring after we've had some, you know, significant amount of time to work with building administrators or the curriculum leaders, teachers, to, to have more specific steps that we want to take to address some of those areas of need. At this particular point in time, I can really say, I can address and let you know what those areas are, but coming up with specific strategies on how we're going to address them, I would like to have more time and maybe come back in the spring and say, this is the way we addressed it, this is where we are now, and this is what we're going to look for when the 2019 results come out. So, I just want to temper, temper my present, to let you know that, temper, temper that expectation to let you know my next presentation is really going to be more reporting-based and letting you know what those areas are and what the scores are, and how we can start to look at it in context with the accountability measures. Does that make sense?
Okay. Any other question? Okay, I have two questions, or, again, for next time. First, how is what parents are going to see when their child's MCAS 2.0 score comes home? How's that going to be different from what they saw last time? And I'm not asking now, I'm saying, can we have that?
Sure, so you, a sample parent report, I can do that.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be coming, and we should understand, oh, okay.
We, yeah.
I haven't seen it.
Depends if they got into your mail yet.
Yeah, it hasn't gotten to me.
It hasn't gotten to me.
Okay.
It, it looks like last year's report, so.
Oh, okay, so it's not any different, okay.
That's pretty much the same.
And then, the other thing I'm curious about is what the overlap is between the lowest performing quartile and high need students. I'm just curious, both for us and also statewide, and, I mean, it's, because I don't know where that would be, and I'm curious.
And part of the reason why they did go to the lowest 25 percent is some, some schools didn't have, when they were reporting their accountability data, they didn't have sub, they don't, they didn't have any subgroups. So, some of the schools, like majority white students, they didn't have, they didn't have enough students in a certain subgroup in order to report to go, that was going to count for their accountability. So, this is why they're going to the lowest 25 percent. They're saying, it doesn't matter what subgroup you're in, we're just going to look at the lowest 25 percent achieving students based upon the MCAS results, and we're going to give you that list. And then, that's where you can start to do some overlapping, see where the intersection comes in, to say, okay, is there a particular subgroup that's represented in that lowest 25 percent? Does that make, does?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the overlap is.
Yeah, we can, we can report on that, yeah.
Okay.
But, I, I wanted to give you some reasons why they went to the lowest 25 percent.
Sure, okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much, and we look forward to hearing from you again. So, moving on, we have the MAS C Annual Business Meeting, by which I mean, we're going to discuss, we're going to discuss resolutions, and so first, we need to appoint a delegate. Is anyone actually going to the meeting? Mr. Haner is going, is anyone else?
Going to one session.
You're going to one session, but you're not going to go to the whole meeting? Okay. Mr. Haner, would you like to, to serve as our delegate?
I, I move that Mr. Haner be elected as delegate-
Second.
-to Arlington School Committee.
Okay, we have a second.
One second.
Does anyone want to speak to the motion? Is there any?
I think Mr. Haner is a highly qualified, terrific person.
Be careful.
He will do a great job representing us.
Okay.
I got new shoes.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. Okay, so Mr. Haner is our elect, is our delegate. So, we had the, I have to pull it up now. We have the MAS C resolutions in our packet. Can we go through the resolutions and talk about how we want, how we're interested in having you represent our views? Okay, so the first resolution is rejecting the arming of educators. I'm going to try and do this fast, so we're not necessarily going to have great discussion on things that we're all kind of of the same mind. I think we're, I mean, we are in favor of the resolution, so.
I don't think there's any need for discussion.
Okay, okay, so, I don't think we need to have motions on these unless we're having-
No, essentially.
I think if somebody wants to talk to it, then they should, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Or if we have, you know, like, it's split, then we'll-
Yeah, yeah.
-talk about having motions. Okay, the next resolution is about small and rural districts, and they want a working group to advise the legislature on the best public policy selection, solutions to support.
I think that's a great idea.
Sounds fine, okay. Next resolution is elimination of the Federal Department of Education. They want to work with the federal delegation to reject any notion of combining the U.S. Department of Education with other government departments.
Yes.
Okay, so we're all in favor of that.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is about regional school transportation, and it's to promote greater competition for bus service contracts. So, legislature should eliminate MGL 71, 7C and authorize a deeper analysis of the lack of bidders on school transportation contracts.
I have no opinion on this.
It really impacts us, and that, a good chunk of what we pay to Minuteman is transportation. And, you know, they have a big network, and when schools regionalized, there was a commitment of the state to fund 100 percent of transportation. The state has since gone back on that. And, you know, they're having a rough time of it. The, the bus company seems to be in collusion. You bid that one, and I'll bid that one, and, and maybe, something's got to be done to break that.
Yeah, it's, I agree. I mean, even if it's not affecting us directly, it's affecting other school children, and we have-
I said nothing about it.
So, I'm in favor, okay. Does anyone have a problem with us being in favor of this motion? No. Okay, moving on. Reporting and accountability standards. It, it would be resolved that the MAS C works with the legislature and the Board of Education to ensure that all students or persons in schools that receive public funds under the authority of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education or a local public school district are held to the same standards and requirements in the state. So, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, this, this has been put in, this is put in by the Board of Directors. One of the things is that there, there are private entities who are educating kids in some instances, be it the 766 providers, where there's really not a lot of accountability coming back at them, be it fiscal or in terms of actual performance. And I think that's the intent of the resolution.
Okay, okay. So, we're in favor of that one. Next is about reproductive health education, and it would be resolved that the MAS C supports evidence-based reproductive health curricula. Further, they call upon the U.S. Department of Education and the executive branch to stop their support of abstinence-only education.
Strongly in favor.
Any, all in favor? Okay. Next one is on gender identity inclusive athletic participation policy. And, this is to help, it would be resolved that the MAS C helped file legislation which would have the effect of protecting LGBTQ students from discrimination, harassment, and bullying by schools that should treat, I think there's some words that aren't quite right here. School, I think they mean, schools should be, should treat students based on their gender identity, protecting their privacy, providing access to gender-neutral restrooms, locker rooms, and private stall showers, using their preferred pronouns, embedding sensitivity training in the professional development, and providing uniform accommodations.
Strongly in favor.
So.
This was proposed by Framingham, and it's really important to preserve the rights of kids. I think their concern in Framingham is not with what they're doing locally, but when their kid, their sports team's gone on an away trip, making sure that the host community is treating their students with respect. And I think that's an excellent resolution.
That makes a lot of sense. Okay, so we're in favor of that. And, and I just want to point out that they put in a rationale, and I'm going to read that because I think it's good for our audience to hear. "The at-risk behavior for LGBTQ students, which includes suicide ideation, is sharply reduced with some basic interventions. With federal laws that are vague with the protections for most vulnerable students, public schools in Massachusetts should, should take steps to ensure their protection with guidance from the legislature." From, LGBTQ students throughout Massachusetts will have better protections and will have reduced adverse behaviors. So, I think that's a good thing to hear. The next one is on sports wagering. It would be resolved that MAS C requests that, should the General Court enact legislation to legalize wagering on sporting events, that the General Court shall commit a portion of the revenues generated from sports wagering to public education. Mr. Haner?
I have a very strong aversion to this. I will, I will, I do not like gambling money to be used for, for education. I realize the rationale for this of, by throwing some money at schools to, to get support. I will, as the representative, support it if the majority of the committee wants it. But, I have problems with the, I don't see the amount of money coming back offsetting the, all the problems that come from people that become addicted to gambling. That's my personal feeling, and as I stated, I will represent the majority of, of the committee.
How does the, Mr.?
Yeah, I mean, instinctually, I'm, I'm opposed to this as well. I think it creates perverse incentives that are not in line with what we stand for as, as, in public education. So, I would be opposed to it as well.
Okay. Does anyone else have a strong shot? Mr. Schlickman?
I don't mind taking, taking the money, but I don't think that should be our revenue source. You know, the legislature should take steps to raise revenue into the general fund and distribute it equitably, based on the commitments they made in 1993 when every form was passed.
Okay, so how would legal-
I might ask a consensus of the committee, polling the committee consensus, if, unless the majority of the people are, whatever.
Okay. At this point, I'm hearing more negative opinions. I, who would support us not being in favor of this resolution? This is a straw poll. Who would support us being against the sports wagering?
In other words, we, you've got the sense that-
Yeah, you do.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. The next resolution is access to information for parents and students who are clients of special education. And, the resolution is that MAS C urges, urges the legislature to amend state law to require that parents and students be provided with a copy via email or mail of all the assessments that are performed for students in the family's preferred language at least five days prior to any meeting at which parents and students will review a proposed IAP, a, a proposed individual, individual education plan. So.
Can we ask Ms. Elmer to speak to us?
I mean, currently, you're required to have 48 hours, and so, I think the five days would also then reduce the time in which the teachers could prepare the stuff, so it would certainly put a burden on the school side to meet that newer requirement.
Mr. Haner?
I think there should be, I hear what you're saying. I think there should be some latitude also expanding the time to have the meeting. In other words, if you're going to add five days on one end, add the five days on the other end. That's a, and I think that would alleviate what you, your concern, which I think is a valid concern.
Yeah, I think the issue would probably be those timelines are a federal timeline with a 30 and 45 days, and you're talking about a state. So, I, I don't know- So I don't know where the interplay would be.
I mean, not in this town, but I'm a child advocate, and I realize sometimes things are done for a lot of reasons, compressing. And for one reason or another, it doesn't get, five days as an advocate, I think, is a great thing. But I also accept the understanding of causing problems within a district too, and doing accurate reporting. I, again, I have mixed feelings about this one here, for just the reasons that were brought forward.
Okay, Mr. Schlickman.
I sort of have a philosophical problem with us advocating for legislation to increase a mandate. I mean, if we want to do this as individual school committees, we can direct our superintendent to do this. And without putting another constraint to state law.
Okay, so I'm sensing that we are against this resolution.
Does Mr. Carden have any?
No, I mean, I would be curious to see why the MASC board, you know, in discussion at the assembly, why the MASC board felt this was necessary.
I'll be happy to question it, hopefully.
And then the last one is a proposal to amend the MASC bylaws.
Yeah, what happens is the...
They want to change something from...
Yeah, the resolutions requests come in with the deadline of July 1st, that's in the bylaws. So then you have to go and assemble a resolutions committee. And it's a lot more difficult to do that during the summertime. By pushing it back to June, you've got people who are still in town, you can do the work better with people still around and come up with a little better result out of the resolutions committee.
Okay, so I think we're in favor of that?
Yeah.
Okay, and so, just to put this in context for our audience, this, these are resolutions which will be coming up at the Massachusetts Association for School Committees' annual meeting, which is both a meeting and also has a number of seminars and things. Mr. Heiner will attend, Dr. Seuss will attend. It's down on the Cape, so we can't all get down there all the time. But it's really a good educational thing, and then it helps us with our advocacy on behalf of both Arlington and all the schoolchildren in Massachusetts. And also, I note that Mr. Heiner isn't bound by any of the discussion here. He's just got a sense of the committee, and then he'll decide his resolutions change or not to how he wants to vote on our behalf.
I will attempt to report back.
Oh, that'd be great too, thank you. Yes, so, okay, so, Mr. Thielman, you just missed out on how we're gonna vote on all of our...
I'll do whatever.
Okay.
They gave me permission to...
If you have, you can talk to Mr. Heiner and...
I'm gonna, yeah, I support Mr. Heiner.
Okay, so now, moving on. Oh, and it's perfect, it's good timing. Policy BEA, regular school committee meetings. Mr. Schlickman, would you like to discuss this?
Well, yeah, I mean, as we're going through the policy manual, one of the policies we came up with is BE, came, came to is BEA, which defines our meeting date as Thursdays. And I know that my first, first turn on the school committee in the last decade, we were a Tuesday meeting group with reserved parking. And now we're a Thursday meeting group without reserved parking. That said, we've noticed a lot of problems with conflicts of events and concerts and everything. It seems like anytime somebody's planning an event, it's, oh, let's do it on Thursday, it's a great night to do it. So, and teachers like to have open houses on Thursday because they're, only have one more day to make it through before being able to rest after the event. They're not dragging all week, and I understand that. But with so many conflicts and so many problems, cross-scheduling against others using this building on Thursday, and all the other events that we might want to attend on a Thursday, we put forth a proposal to amend BEA to move it back to Tuesday. And that's the rationale.
Okay. Dr. Seuss, would you?
So, I brought this up a few years ago, and that, the document in here under reference materials is the one I created back then, where I just sort of went through the calendar and saw all the events that were happening on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and Thursdays. I, I like it for a couple of different reasons. One, this idea that there are so many events on Thursday because teachers don't necessarily want to have a very late-night event on Tuesday for the reasons you mentioned. Also, potentially, I have this fantasy that we could get all of the material by Friday night and spend the weekend reviewing it, and then have, you know, and time for Tuesday. When I made this proposal, this was before the building committee chose the Tuesday, and I understand that's a potential conflict. And so I do, I'm, you know, I'm actually on the fence about it now. It was very strongly favored a couple of years ago, but now the building committee is meeting every other Tuesday, that might create new problems.
Who else would like to, Mr. Thielman?
Well, I'm involved in the building committee meetings on Tuesdays. So I think, you know, for those of us who are involved in the building committee, we have worked very hard to get a date that works that is not the night of the permanent town building committee. Although sometimes there's a conflict with that. And so, we have scheduled this for the first and the third Tuesday of every month. And there will be a period of time at some point, at different points in the project, where the committee's gonna have to meet every Tuesday. It won't, it won't be forever over the six or seven-year period of this project, but it'll be, it'll be over certain times. And so, I would, you know, I would respect whatever vote the committee made and abide by, but I would not be able to support this just because of the Tuesday obligations that I see in front of us. It's just a lot of Tuesdays. And, you know, there's, the one thing, as a parent anyway, there's always stuff going on in the schools. It doesn't matter what night of the week it is. That's what it feels like to me.
Does anyone else want to speak for or against this idea? Okay, I'm gonna chime in now with my thoughts, which echo Mr. Thielman's. At this point, the building committee is a committee of, what, 19, 20, I forget?
Yeah.
So, it's that much harder to schedule, even when we try and shift from one Tuesday to the next Tuesday, we lose a number of people. I don't see that committee being able to change its date. I think we've kind of booked Tuesdays into, six years into the future. And Mr. Thielman's right that we're going to be going to potentially every Tuesday for, at points during this. I'd also point out that it's not just affecting Mr. Thielman and myself, it's also our CFO, our superintendent have to attend this, and the high school principal, the assistant principal, who often come to our meetings. So, I, if that wasn't on, already on the books, I would certainly consider a change. But as we've got it and until the high school's built, I feel like I cannot support this change at this point.
So this is a first reading, so this is...
This was a discussion.
Okay, I see.
So, I think the next question is, do you folks want to think about and talk about it more? You know, like, do you want to look at maybe Wednesdays and come back to us? Or do you want to put it out and we'll vote on it? What would you like to do?
Just getting a sense of the committee would help us. I mean, if there is really no appetite to change from Thursday, we're not, we're not gonna go there. I mean, I'm somewhat agnostic on this because I don't have kids in the schools, so I'm not conflicted on parent nights and kids...
I'm gonna do a straw poll.
I think...
Oh, Mr. Heiner.
Ms. Morgan?
I'd just like to state, the, the issue is based not on a specific night. It's that several years coming up, when we changed this from Tuesdays to Thursday, there was a verbal commitment not to make an effort to avoid scheduling on Thursday nights. Didn't happen. It never happened. So I'm asking the committee, and I, I agree with Mr. Schlickman, I don't have any children, but there are events that I would like to participate in that I've not ever been able to participate in because of this. Please let us try to minimize the events that take place, a concerted effort. I haven't seen that on behalf of the administration. And we've talked about a system-wide calendar and stuff to post there so people prepare long-term ahead to do the planning.
Okay. I do think it's better this year, at least in the ones that I'm seeing so far. I'm not saying there aren't some conflicts, but I feel like it's better this year. But, so I'm gonna do a straw poll, and I'm going to ask everyone to say if they're interested in moving the, in pursuing a move of our meetings to Tuesday. So, Mr. Heiner.
No.
No. Ms. Morgan?
No.
Mr. Thielman, I know.
No.
Mr. Schlickman?
Sort of, but not really.
Okay.
So I, you know, after the high school building project, I would definitely be, Monday, just throw out there, I know town meeting would conflict for a couple of weeks, but...
And Schlickman too.
Oh, and Schlickman's right, so nevermind, yes, Schlickman's office, yeah, okay, so never mind that. Yeah, so in five years, yes.
Yeah, I'm in Bevillin, so...
Okay, so I think at this point, we'll just have to take it up after the high school's built, in the new high school.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on. We have a discussion, first, do you want to make our announcement?
Yes. It is with great regret, but I must report that our CFO will be moving on. I'm very excited for him as he's moving on to another position, will be leaving us. I want to thank John for all the wonderful work he's done within the year. He's done a great job of right-sizing our budget and clearing up some things that need to be cleared up. And he's been very helpful with me and my position, and just to us as a whole, as a whole central office. So, it is with great, great regret, but I just want to wish him well as he moves on to, you know, pursue some career goals that he has. And with that, I know that we're going to move into a search for a new CFO in order to fill his shoes.
Yeah, so he won't, he's not leaving like next week.
No, no.
We've got a number more months, thank you.
He will be here until December. So we have some time to do a comprehensive search and to find his replacement. His shoes will never be filled, but we'll have somebody to fill the position, so...
Yeah, we'll, we'll have someone to fill the position, but not his shoes.
But it's been a wonderful, it's been a great pleasure working with John through this time.
So, so as we had heard about his eventual departure, we have, as Dr. McNeil said, we're going to meet, need to move on to a hiring process. And that means appointment of some number of school committee members to the interview committee. And I have asked people to forward if they were interested. So far, I'm doing this by memory, so it was Mr. Carden, Dr. Seuss was interested potentially, Ms. Morgan, Mr. Heiner, were all interested in serving potentially on the committee. We can't have four. We need to decide how many people we want to have on it. Part of the thing, well, you'd need to be able to make both interview sessions. And I sent out the, had Karen sent out the dates and times. So, can everyone make the interview sessions?
So I'm out.
Okay, so you're out.
Yeah. I can make most of it, but I have a power of negotiation during some part of it.
Yeah, I think we really need...
Did you give the dates? She gave the dates.
Yes.
Rob can't beat a negotiation and it...
What?
Rob, Rob would have the same conflict.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so there's a negotiation conflict on the 23rd, starting at five.
Okay.
You're supposed to go to six.
I think probably they will schedule the interviews to end at...
Whatever time.
At whatever time, so...
That's my only conflict.
And you're able to make those times?
I should be able to make it, yeah.
Okay, so now we've got three people. We can have three people on the committee, or if we feel that we would prefer to have fewer, that is okay also. So with Dr. Bodie away, and I had stuff also, we weren't able to really connect well about this. But last time, when we hired Mr. Denizio, the composition of the committee was school committee representation, central office administration representation, Dr. Bodie, of course, and other people that the role interacts with in town. So the chair of the finance committee was there, the comptroller was there, the treasurer, and somebody else I'm forgetting. Let me see if I got...
Somebody from town manager?
Oh, yes, town manager's office. Yes, Sandy Puller was there as a member of, as the town manager's office. My expectation is the remaining composition of the committee will be something like that, so... So, what do people think? Do you want, all three of you want, or?
I'm...
Okay, you're okay?
I'm willing to bow out.
Oh, no, no, you didn't.
No, you're, you're on.
All right, yeah, then three's fine. I mean, it typically operates by consensus anyways, so the fact, it's not like we're gonna wait the vote or anything.
Yeah.
Probably not, it's getting to be a big committee with all those people, but it's fine.
Mr. Heiner?
There's a couple of aspects that need to be done in executive session from our point, either prior to, regarding compensation, regarding other aspects that have to be done, confidentiality. So I guess that part of the members of the subcommittee would be reporting back to the full committee on that aspect of it during that time. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not...
With regard to those things that would be held confidential prior to...
Right.
In the negotiation part, such as if an individual might ask questions regarding that.
Okay, okay. Okay, so if people are comfortable with having three members of the school committee on, then we have our three members, and you're all set. And then if it, Mr. Schlickman?
I just want to say it's very appropriate for us to have three members on, because this is really our appointment, as opposed to accepting the recommendation of the superintendent. So having the three different perspectives, I think the, we've got three really good school committee members with different perspectives. And I think that between the three of them, if they could, if all three of them come to me and say, wow, this is a great candidate, we want that candidate, I'm certainly gonna listen to that.
Okay, great.
I'm talking, sorry, with three?
Mr. Heiner, Dr. Seuss, Mr. Carden. Okay, Mr. Heiner?
The job description, at what point and where are we going to discuss that?
That's what we're gonna do next. Okay, so, I'm not...
Sorry, can I just make a public, like, so one of the reasons I think this is such an important position is partly that Mr. Denizio has done such a fabulous job and has really, you know, sort of shown us how, how having the really good person in there can make a difference. So, I just want to...
So we want someone like you, John?
Yes, so just duplicate yourself.
Okay, so, we have the job description. It's the same job description that was used to hire Mr. Denizio, but it can be changed. As long as we change it before we hire the new, before the new person signs their contract. And there, we make sure they're aware of the new job description, then we're set. So, I'm actually not sure if now is the, now is the best time and place to discuss this, or if this wants to go to a subcommittee to be brought back to the full committee. Mr. Heiner?
If we are, we were already advertised for the position. We're talking about interviews. By the time it goes to a subcommittee, brings back to a subcommittee, to a full committee to discuss, if we make substantial changes at that point, it may throw a wrench in the hiring, it may not. I'm not saying that we're going to do substantial changes and stuff. I only have one item in the whole thing that I'm concerned with, it's one word, in the job description.
Okay. Does anyone else have major change? Mr. Schlickman?
The question I would ask is to Mr. Denizio, is does this job description reasonably align to what you've been doing? Would you recommend, will you make any changes or make it a little more descriptive?
So, I didn't review the job description since I started here, so I don't feel comfortable commenting on that right now. I could review it.
Well, yeah, okay, fine. I didn't expect you to have that question asked of you, but I, that would be the answer I'd want. I mean, I want to know what word Mr. Heiner wants to change, and I want to know what Mr. Denizio thinks about the job description vis-à-vis... thinks about the job description vis-à-vis what really goes on, so.
Okay, Mr. Carden?
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think it worked relatively well for the job as it has been filled since I've been on the committee. You know, the question I asked last time, and, you know, would ask again if Dr. Bodie was here, was, again, rethinking about whether, you know, this is really what we want to have, this is very much focused on the financial management of the district, and not so much on the operations, there is some operational component, but, you know, other districts, especially one getting to be our size, you know, have a more, you know, assistant superintendent for finance and operations, with a business manager under that person, so that would just be my question, is are we sure we want to keep the position as it is? Last time I asked the same question, she said yes, she liked the way it was, so.
So wouldn't that also get in, I mean, doesn't that go into the five-year, the multi-year plan, you know, which way?
Yeah, there would be a financial impact, yeah.
No, 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 I mean, should that, something like that, should that be part of the multi-year plan, you know, to get to that point?
Right, but we would, this would be the opportunity to do it, without an incumbent in the position.
Right. Okay. We can't ask Dr. Bodie.
But presumably, since she put this out there, she, this is what she wants.
I have to presume the answer is the same as last time.
Okay. Mr. Haner?
If you look at the second page of the job description, about two-thirds of the, about a third of the way down, there are two lines. One begins with the word attend, and this line following it, participate. I would recommend eliminating the word all after attend, and change participate to attend.
I'm not seeing that.
It says attend all school committee meetings and budget subcommittee meetings. I'm recommending take the word all out after attend.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And the next line says participate, I think it, I would like to see participate removed, and write again, attend as a member. This does not require the individual to be at every single meeting without the word all, but is expected to be an active participant. And I, and I'd like to say for the audience and everyone else, Mr. Dinesio has attended all the meetings, and been an active and viable participant in the meetings that I've attended.
Okay, anyone else want to speak to Mr. Haner's changes? I would actually say attend required school committee meetings, so that we can decide that he's.
I can accept that.
Or, and then I would personally feel better leaving it as participate as a member, because he does serve, I'm thinking about permanent town building committee, you know, he's, he's.
Those, that was the, those two words were, caused the conflict with the prior CFO.
Well, you can just say.
But that's why we want it all.
You can just say, serve as a member of several school and town building, including all, then it's, then he's, you know, he's serving on these committees.
Okay, yeah, serve, serve is fine.
That works.
Yeah, no, okay.
Always a good verb to begin with, serve.
Okay. I think, given that our human resources officer is also not here, that we shouldn't, I would like his thoughts on these things, but we can send those things.
I think it's just two suggestions, right? Attend required school committee meetings, serve as a, instead of participate. And then I do think Mr. Haner makes a good point, that anyone applying for the job should understand that that's part of the job, they have to go to the capital planning, permanent town building, budget, revenue task force. It's in the job description, it's right there up front, they serve on those committees.
Right. Okay. We will give these to Rob, make sure that he thinks it's okay, and, but if any, I feel like we haven't had a chance to talk about the, I mean, we didn't get a chance to look at it that much, so if people have other thoughts, bring them to the next meeting, and we can still change it before.
And Mr. Dinesio can give us thoughts.
Yeah, if you take a look at it.
Take a look at it and tell us if you have any.
We'd be interested.
I'd like any recommendations from Mr. Spiegel, Mr. Dinesio, and Dr. Bodie.
I think.
I would say Dr. Bodie is fine with the description.
And Mr. Spiegel, too, I would think.
I would think.
Right, okay. Okay, so Karen, I've got those changes that we made a few days ago. Okay, that's that, so moving on, we have the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number 19053, total amount $730,263.94 dated 9/27/2018. Approval of may minutes, approval of regular school committee meeting minutes dated 9/27/18, and there is no trick.
Who would you approve as presenter?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. There is no other policy that we're going to discuss tonight. Now we have subcommittee liaison reports and announcements, budget.
Thank you. So we met just earlier this week, we had a busy meeting, covered lots of ground, so just pretty quickly, we looked again at the Rob Rawling Fund balances, the administration was able to spend down some of those balances, for the Gibbs Library, for the AEDs, the after-school is investing in a van, we had to furnish new classrooms for all the new teachers, since we added six sections, and also added classrooms here at the high school. There were a whole variety of building updates that they did over the summer, they added bike racks, some technology updates, materials for the new classes, both, you know, classroom materials, in addition to the furnishing of the classrooms. And there's still some spending in process. For FY 2019, John's gonna come to us at the next meeting to do the annual reset, since funds shifted in the budget categories over the summer, but overall, we're doing pretty well, and there's no, no major issues for now. For FY 2020, we talked about how we're going to develop the 2020 budget, along with the five-year plan, we're going to basically do both. So we will still have the 2020 budget, which will still follow what's in the long-range plan for us, but we'll also beside that have the five-year plan. I think that's the main stuff we went over, and we're going to meet again later this month, right, or early November.
Great. Community relations?
Yes, we met on the first. We continued our discussion on after-school, we had a member of the public who came to talk about his frustration with communication. We had some very, very preliminary discussions on whether redistricting made sense, and the answer is we're not sure, but we're still looking into it, and basically, the problem is, is that we just have no space at all in the district, and so, you know, expanding the buffer zones, does it help? It's just not absolutely clear, so we're still looking into that. Then we looked at, what else did we look at? Oh, we, so we had a, we have an appointment to the Commission on Arts and Culture, that we hope to bring to the school committee next time we meet, and I just want to apologize to that commission, I know that they're frustrated that the process moves so slowly, and I keep saying to them, we can't talk unless we have these meetings, can't send an email to each other and have a conversation, or call each other on the phone, and that's just why it takes so long, but, but we had seven fabulous people who applied, and it's embarrassment of riches, and we have to choose one, but we hope that all the other six will be involved in the, in arts in Arlington in some way. And then we looked at the revision that the Arlington Human Rights Committee made to two documents, and one is that they've worked on with the police department, and that we looked at last year on response to hate incidents, or we want to have a standard procedure across the town that everyone sort of buys into, that the administration, school administrations buy into, the police are happy with, and Arlington Human Rights Committee's happy with, and that's getting close to finalizing, but we still need to get more feedback from administration. And then a policy that was once in place, that, to have school liaisons, there was once a very active school liaison group, people who, from the Arlington Human Rights Committee, working with each school, and were looking to, and that sort of fell apart, and people are pointing fingers, and we're just, I mean politely, no one's being really angry, but, but we're looking to make that relationship work better, and to codify what it should look like. So that's it.
We have a joint curriculum and budget subcommittee meeting on the 17th at 7:00 PM. You're gonna get some materials for us, right? And then the chair of the budget subcommittee is working very hard on minutes at the last meeting.
Yes, I'll send those out.
But this, so this is a joint committee that's working on a long-term school committee vision for our budget for the district.
Okay, policy?
We're meeting next Wednesday at five, five to seven, so some of us have the joy of doing two back-to-back meetings.
Ask for dinner.
Ask for dinner, yeah, yeah.
Facilities.
Wanna come back to me?
We're meeting on October 29th at 3:30 in the superintendent's office.
Okay. Legal services review.
Three to four. Three to four, sorry, thank you.
Legal services review.
Nothing at this time.
High school building committee.
Well, our next meeting is on Monday, the, I'm sorry, Tuesday the 16th, so Tuesday the 16th at 6:00 PM we meet next, and we invite the public to the meeting, we are, we're moving along, we're getting, we're having, we had a good dialogue with the architects at our last meeting about the, about different, different places to place the building on the site, and a conversation about the front, and a conversation about what iconic means. We learned that, or I learned anyway, that buildings become iconic, and so, you know, we're at the beginning of that conversation, stay tuned, so come to the meeting on the, on the 16th, and then our next public forum is on Wednesday, October 24th at 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
I think it was, yeah, it was moved, because Town Hall is being used for early voting.
I'm sorry.
It was moved to Thompson, is that right?
I believe so, yes. Same time.
Same time, so.
Same time.
So, right, so the, sorry, I got that, I missed, so it's Wednesday, October 24th, 7:00, 7:00 PM at the Thompson, Thompson School, is that correct? Okay, let's just confirm it.
Yes, yes, it's, I'm confirming, I'm confirming it, it's on our website, it's at the Thompson School Gymnasium.
Yep.
And it is because of early voting at Town Hall, which is required.
7:00 PM on the 24th. Did I miss anything, or should I?
No, I think that's.
See how small that gym is?
Yeah, exactly.
Y'all wanna meet over at the Gibbs?
The Dallas, the Dallas is a big gym.
Gibbs. It's, it's at the Thompson.
Oh, gee.
The public forum.
I'm not changing it again, or I'm, I didn't do it, but it's not being changed again. Gibbs Committee?
Nothing to report.
Okay, nothing to report. Okay, are there any other liaison reports, announcement, or future agenda items? Dr. Seuss?
Okay, two announcements, unfortunately, they conflict. On Saturday, the Arlington Human Rights Committee is having a forum on restorative justice, and so that should be really interesting, and very topical and interesting to people, that's at the Senior Center at 6:30. And then unfortunately, at the very same time, the LARMA project, they're doing a stage reading of the LARMA project, multi-generational, current students, past students, my son's in it, at the high school, and that starts at 7:00, so unfortunately, I want to go to both, but they conflict.
Okay, Mr. Haner?
Ms. Morgan and I walked to school yesterday with the students at Stratton School, it was a beautiful morning, and didn't get hit by anything, so it went well. And do you want to talk about Saturday?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Morgan and I did our first school committee at Cafe Nero.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
It was, it was so exciting.
It was so exciting.
We, we had the coffee.
It was great.
Coffee was good.
The company was great.
And we had, once, one person came to us, just, just as we were wrapping up.
That's what always happens.
Yeah, well, he was a unique individual, he was from the city of Boston, visiting his daughter out here, and he was so impressed with what we were doing, he asked for our emails to give to the school committee, the Boston School Committee, see if they could do it. I think they'd have a little bit bigger response than we.
Yeah, unfortunately, I failed to advertise it on social media, and I, I will try to be better next, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, any future agenda items?
I had one more announcement, just that earlier this week, the Massachusetts House approved an already-approved Senate bill that will require DUCY to give guidelines about early screening procedures and protocols for students who potentially have dyslexia, which I think is interesting, and I'm looking forward, well, I won't editorialize, that's my announcement, done.
Great. So any?
I just got back from science camp, I was there last night.
Oh, nice.
Down in Rhode Island, all is going well.
How'd you do?
I, well, okay, so Bill, thank you. I, I was the, you know, they have the parents, you know, kind of moderate different groups, and my group won the egg drop contest.
Oh, really? Congratulations.
Good advice, I said.
Did you make soup?
No, I said, I said, why don't you pick one facilitator and let her kind of organize things, and that was it, that's all I wanted.
No egg drops?
No, no, but, you know, you keep dropping, it's really, it was really well done, it was fun, yeah, so.
When I worked in New Jersey, it's like an eight-story tower from the high school, and they drop the eggs off of that.
Anyway, all, it's a great place, it's my second time there, great, great, great event.
Great. Any future agenda items? No. Okay, so at this point, we go into executive session, we will not return from it. Executive session is to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, to discuss the chief financial officer position, and to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, collective bargaining may also be conducted. And with that, oops, sorry, I forgot, any motion?
Oh, yes.
Any motion?
Move to go to executive session.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Haner?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Was that one, aye, yes?
Six ayes, one yes.